Executive session.
Madam Chair.
No, we need a vote. Mr. Psycholigia?
Yes.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett? And that's the case.
Madam Chair, I'm going to sort of tie it to this. I'm on a public business matter. I'll leave it in. We're going to have a public business matter. As we're in the motions, I'd like to go into the executive session number 11. It's because we consider it an executive session. And we begin the conversation. Three, seven, one, eight personnel. Eight, seven, eight legal matters. We're going to do a proposal of new policies. Eight changes in curriculum and the governor's executive order.
Mr. Psycholigia?
Yes.
Mr. Boston? Mr. Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson? Mr. Parsons?
Dr. Brown, we can't hear a thing they said. We need to be able to hear them.
Yeah. I guess I'll just ask Mr. Fletcher to be quiet. Ask the SRO if he would, ask the people there to be quiet.
Ms. Garrett? Ms. Emily Hicks will stand for education and pledge. Mr. Psycholigia, please.
Heavenly Father, thank you for us having this opportunity tonight together and together to make policies and decisions to, in the best interest of our children and our community. Guide this board as we act tonight and on future issues. And keep watch over our kids in the naming your son our Savior. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda this evening, Dr. Brown?
I know, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a motion that we finalize the agenda?
So.
Thank you, Mr. Boston. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Psycholigia. Do we have any vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Need approval of the minutes? Do I have a measure that we approved the minutes of our last meeting?
So.
That was minutes of May 6th.
Yes, so.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Boston. All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Brown, that takes us to our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I asked Superintendent Mr. Fletcher to come forward and lead us through those.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's a pleasure tonight to bring some recognitions to you. First of all, we'd like to recognize the winners of the VSDA art contest. I'd like to invite Kaylee Couch, Chayden Rose, Chadon Rose Music, Destiny Coleman. If they would come forward with their parents and the school administrators, if they're here. There we go.
Right on the front.
Come right up.
Come around.
Parents, family, you're welcome to come and stand with your child. But as you all well know, every year we have a county art contest and we select winners in each medium for our county division level. And then we also select the best out of the pre-K through five section, the six through eight, and the nine through 12. And those go on to the competition at the regional VSDA. And I think that maybe was virtual this year, but a lot of you saw those injuries. And we're pleased to announce to you our best in category. First of all, pre-K five, Kaylee Couch. We're going to present these framed photos, but we're going to keep them. We'll have them on the wall right outside the boardroom for a year. And then we'll give those back to the winners if you remember that year.
We'll let you borrow them just for a moment so we can get a photograph outside when we finish. We'd like that.
And our six-eight winner was Chadon Rose Music. Who, Dr. Brown, was also a winner last year. And we're going to give the last year's photo back or the artwork back to them.
What we have, last year's. This is not last year.
And our nine through 12 winner was also a winner last year, Destiny Coleman.
If you're Destinies from last year, we'll let you have this one, okay?
Next, we're going to recognize Castlewood High School golf team. They play second in the state tournament this year. I'd like to ask the members of the team to come forward with their coaches and the administrators. Mr. Robertson, I think he's here. Coleman Cook, Bailey Garnett, Maddox Barnett, Jacob Lasley, Jake Rose, Abby Bradley, Bree Phillips, Connor Robinette, and Heath Southern. Parents are here, you're welcome to stand up for your child. They're all the straps, so just pick one.
Madam Chair?
Right here, get behind your child.
Madam Chair, that's a pretty good look to both of y'all that Cook got there.
Golf parents? Golf parents?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Mr. Robertson, if you'd like to say a few words and then we'll have your touches.
Well, I suppose I, I'm not a golfer, obviously. But I did have the opportunity to, well, two years in a row to go to the state golf tournament. And these gentlemen were kind enough to let me ride along the cart so I wouldn't look stupid and go where I shouldn't go. And learned so much listening to these gentlemen talk about the game and talk about these kids. And then when you watch these young people go out there and hit a little ball with a stick and make it go where they want it to go, it's amazing to watch the way they carry themselves, the way they represent our school. It's just, it's amazing to watch that whole process take place. It's not that fast-paced action, but it certainly has its own intensity. So I've been fortunate enough to watch that. Runner-up this year to a tremendous state champion at George Whitt. And from what I understand, they lose a big part of their team. So I am planning on a bigger celebration next year out of this one.
So, all right, Mr. Cook?
Well, Mike's not a golfer yet, but we're working on it. He's got a good start. But no, we want to thank Mike and his staff for their support and just being there. It means a lot to the kids to see a, you know, a friend in the face. Like he said, it's, for those who don't play, it's a tough game. It's a humbling sport. It will humble you quick. And the intensity, like he says, it's not there as far as a fast-paced game. But for five hours, these kids play their heart out, walking maybe on average four miles on an 18-hole match. And you have to just, you have to control your emotions. Physical ability sometimes is outweighed by the mental. But like I said, it's a tough game. Really proud of these kids, what they bring as far as their character, like Mike says. We were second in the state, but we're second to none as far as their character. They represent their school, their families, and themselves with great dignity. But also, I need to thank all these parents because we couldn't do this without them. With it being a COVID year, the travel, most of these parents sacrificed their time, their gas money, to be with us. Every match is an away match. Every practice is away. So it's really important for those parents to really step up this year. We didn't have a whole lot of expectations playing in the spring. We normally play in the fall. And so with the weather and just not knowing what that would entail as far as their ability to play, but they really, they stepped up and beat all of our expectations this year. We did, we finished second against a team that's won it the last three years in a row. And so this coming year, we do have the expectations of winning it all. I'll speak a little bit about a couple of these players or all these players. And then I also want to thank my assistant, Bob, who volunteers his time and is always there to help us. So have Coleman Cook. He's one of our top three players. He was all district, fourth in the district. He was ninth in the regional tournament and finished 10th in the state tournament. Jake Rose, our lone senior, we're going to miss him. So we're still relatively young team. But Jake played on our district golf championship team and we're really, really busy. Jacob Lasley, he's one of our other top three players. He had an up and down season, kind of like Coleman, but he really played good in the district. He was third in the district, fifth in the region, and then had kind of an off day in the state tournament, but finished good in the back nine to help us secure the second-place win. Abby Bradley, she's probably been our most consistent player the last couple of years. She was second in the district, first in the region, and finished seventh in the state, which also qualified her to play in the girls' state championship, which was all classifications, class one through six. So that was a big honor. She went up there and represented herself and represented the school well. Bailey Garnett, she's a freshman, our only freshman on the team. And she really came up big in our state tournament. She played in our regional tournament and our state tournament and was our third-best scorer for the state tournament, which was big for us getting the second-place win. Bree Phillips, she was in our regional, she was our fourth-place scorer for our regional tournament and really played good in the state tournament. And she's also, she's just a sophomore, so she comes back. Maddox Barnett, he's only been playing a few years, got one of the best swings around. Look for big things for him. He played in our district championship team. Connor Robinette, he really came on from the beginning of the year to the end. He secured himself as our fourth-place scorer most of the time and played, he was sixth in their district tournament and I think was our fifth-place scorer in the regional tournament. Oh, I'm missing somebody. Is that everybody? Okay. Oh, yeah, Heath Southern, who couldn't make it. Heath is our other junior, along with Coleman, and he's played with us for three years, played middle school with us, is another just tough competitor. We can only put six players out there, count four scorers. So sometimes me and Bob, we get, we get, we make, they make us look bad sometimes. But no, really, just appreciate y'all having us here and recognizing us. And again, just so proud of all these kids and their accomplishment. Bob, if you want to say a few words?
I've got nothing really to say other than just how proud I am of this group. They really put it all on my horse this year, and we appreciate it all.
Thank you, guys. Well, the board has a presentation for the team presented to Castlewood High School Golf Team by the Russell County School, excuse me, presented to Castlewood High School Golf Team by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning second place at the 2020-21 VHSL Group 1A State Golf Tournament, June of 2021. Congratulations. We put this one right behind our first-place win next spot.
All right, and our last recognition, our employees of the month. I'm proud to bring to you the teacher of the month, Elizabeth Collins from Castlewood Elementary. I'll ask her, Miss Bennett, to come forward. And sports staff employee of the month, Tiny Shortridge, school nurse at Homeacre High School. She's here, and Mr. Bush. Now, have some epistles to read. Each of these ladies had several recommendations, and I'd like to share them with you. First of all, for Tiny Shortridge. Tiny is a wonderful nurse and an amazing person. She goes above and beyond every day to help take care of everyone. Homeacre High School is blessed to have her as the school nurse. Even when exhausted, she comes to work and works as hard as she can to take care of everyone else. Before she transferred to Homeacre High School, she was a nurse at Homeacre Elementary School when my daughter started school. It meant the world to me to know Tiny was there for her if she needed anything. And my daughter still adores Tiny. Another nomination, Tiny is somewhat of a homeacre high nurse. She does her nursing duties exceptionally well, but she also does out of her way to help everyone on staff. If you need help, she's going to jump in and help you. If you're working on anything and she's nearby, she just steps in and makes it easier for you, does whatever she can to get the task accomplished. During these COVID times, she runs everywhere, keeping us healthy and safe, screening students, giving her daily instructions, diabetes checks.
That's a call that she needs to make. Why is that called?
She does all this while wearing a smile on her face and making you feel cared about. Tiny makes Homeacre High School a better place. And then another one, Tiny goes above and beyond for the faculty and children in Homeacre High School. During this year with COVID-19 pandemic, she's worked tirelessly to keep our school safe. She's worked hours way beyond normal schedule to ensure we are all safe at Homeacre High. She also helps with anything needed around the school and has been a true blessing to us. I highly recommend Tiny Shortridge for employee of the month. So congratulations. And Ms. Collins, I have several to read for her. Now, a lot of hers are from students, and they may be done right, but a little snippet that I'm going to share with you. She is the best. She makes work really easy. She lets me hang out.
Hold on.
And listens to her stories and helps people through hard times.
The distraction will focus with those stories.
We had a hard year.
She is the best ever. I used to hate to write, although all that changed when I met her. She's the sweetest person you will ever meet. She's amazing at her job. She really cares about her students. She really goes out of her way to make sure her students have everything they need for school and out of school. She's funny, nice, a good teacher, and I learned a lot from her. I love her. She is sweet and caring and all around just a lovely person. She's caring and will work things out for you, and she will always understand. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Delegations on the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received phone calls from individuals that would like to address the board. And again, we do have delegation on the agenda available at the end of our agenda for anyone here tonight that would like to speak. The first gentleman is Lester Watson. Mr. Watson with us? Lester Watson. Watson? Uh huh, Lester Watson.
Lester Watson? Lester Watson?
Todd Gackey? Right on right here, we find you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board. My name is Todd Gackey. Pronounced like khaki pants, but with a G, as my wife likes to say. I am with the Family Foundation of Virginia. And I've come all the way from Richmond, Virginia to tell you about some very dangerous policies that we are concerned about. And my remarks are on behalf of the Family Foundation, as well as the Family Freedoms Law Center, which asked me to make a few comments on their behalf. They are the legal arm of the Family Foundation. The Family Freedoms Law Center has brought a suit against the Virginia Department of Education to put a stop to the model transgender policies and to make them have to go back to the drawing board and make some significant changes, make some significant corrections that their policies, so that their policies do not violate law. We anticipate a decision in the near future, so it is not wise for this board to adopt these policies. But regardless of what VDOE provides as guidance, school boards have a primary duty to protect the safety and security of the students under their air. The bodily safety and security of our children and of the public school students here in Russell County, the ability of parents to protect their children and not have their parental rights violated should be at the highest priority. However, these VDOE policies would force all children into dangerous and compromising situations in locker rooms, bathrooms, changing facilities, overnight sleeping accommodations. This isn't hyperbole. This is happening in localities around the state. These policies also violate the fundamental rights of parents to direct the education of their children. And the care for, by allowing, by allowing schools to withhold information from parents about their children is about very sensitive matters. The school board also has an ultimate duty to follow the U.S. and the Virginia constitutions to make, to take precedence over any Virginia state law and federal law. This includes not violating the constitutional rights of students, teachers, and staff. And the Virginia Department of Education's model policies, as FL, the Family Freedoms Law Center's lawsuit alleges, clearly violate in numerous ways rights of privacy, parental rights, free speech, religious exercise, due process, and equal protection, as well as other state and federal laws. Passing these policies will create endless conflicts, and it will result in endless litigation, not to mention innumerable harms to students in all grades. Already, teachers in Virginia have been fired over policies just like these that cannot, where, in which they could not in good conscience according to their sincere beliefs affirm false realities through the use of preferred pronouns. Here in Russell County, if you adopt these sexual orientation and gender identity policies, these same issues will happen right here. So we urge you, please, do not adopt these model policies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, we have Jessica Witt. Is Witt?
Hello. So as you know me, I am Jessica Witt. I do have two kids that go to, one goes to Homeacre Elementary. She'll be in high school next year. And I have a 16-year-old that does at Homeacre High. So I'm asking for you guys to stand strong and protect every child in the county and not just a certain group by not adopting the Department of Education's transgender issue policy. I feel this policy threatens our kids' physical safety and the privacy rights. As you know, the policy forces every K through 12 school to allow a transgender child to use the bathroom of their choice without questioning from school staff. For instance, a boy identifying as a girl can use the girl's bathroom or change in a female locker room, and this can be done without notifying any parents. That terrifies me having a daughter go to the high school. We need to say yes to protecting our kids and no to being forced into adopting sexualized political identities that do not reflect our community. As a parent of teens attending our public schools, I'm deeply concerned about my child's right to expect physical safety and privacy in vulnerable areas such as locker rooms, restrooms, and overnight trips. And you know as well as I do, the use of cell phones. And it's not always a transgender child that you're going to have to worry about. It's the door that you open for other people. They can go in there and film. I mean, these girls are changing clothes, using the bathrooms, but I think that's very unsafe. We hear a lot about transgender rights, and I think we can all agree that every child should be protected from harm regardless. No one ever talks about the harm done to very young girls who feel powerless to accept physical privacy in the presence of a biological male, not to mention young men who do not want to change in front of a biological girl. You need to be proactive, we need to work together, and I hope that you guys are willing to say that. I hope most of you, so I think the people that I know will do that. I expect you guys to do the right thing.
Good evening.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all today. I am a man of health, and my daughter is going to begin the pre-K in the 2223 school year. I also currently have two nephews and one niece that is at Home Acres. After reviewing the Virginia Department of Education model policies, we sponsor the House Bill 145, which is the transgender students in Virginia public schools, I have to say this policy not only fall short for the protection of students, but it wrongly takes away parental rights. I am directly asking each of you to not adopt this policy, and here's why. In the event my niece, who is in high school this year, finds herself in a situation of being sexually confused or dealing with the situation of another student's sexual confusion, this policy demands that no school official or teacher can tell her parents. This policy lists abuse as a concern to her kids, and I agree, abuse, if truly is a concern, then the proper agency should be contacted, such as CPS. But this policy is tried to govern from the exception and removes a parent from a situation when a child meets her mother, father, or guardian more than ever. The policy gives instruction on how to have sensitive information from parents about their own child, and this puts the child at more risk than providing protection. Now, if you've read the model yet, you can find out its actual excerpt on pages 12 and 13 under the student identification section. It demands that information be kept from the parent if requested by the sexually confused student, as well as a means of privacy. This is an unacceptable requirement, though a child's parent is unaware of the warning, which could cause greater harm. The policy applies to K through 12. Now, I think we can agree that no situation, no child, no child's maturity level, and no grade is all the same, so, or uniform, so adopting a uniform policy would be irresponsible. And that is not what is best for our students in Russell County. Parents that only have the right to know what's going on personally with the child, but the concept that children are being taught and what they're experiencing in their daily environment. This policy promotes that gender can be assigned, rather than being connected to chromosomes DNA, which crosses the line into mandatory promotion of a sexualized political agenda. So again, sorry, I'm emotional about it. So again, I am asking you not to adopt this policy for the treatment of transgender students sent by the Virginia Board of Education, because it truly is one of the policies that will safeguard every child's heart, mind, and body. I feel confident that you, the board, can find a compassionate way to protect, in a legal way, as he spelled out, to protect every child, including those with gender confusion, without sacrificing parental rights and child safety. Thank you. I greatly appreciate all that you do for our schoolchildren, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're ready for Section 28, Board's Consideration.
Okay, we have an opportunity to look at the bills and the accounts. Do I have a motion that we approve the bills? Thank you, Mr. Parson, a second.
I'll second you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, all in favor. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Brown, that takes us to the resignations and retirements.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a small list for the board to review and approval tonight.
Have a motion that we approve resignations and retirements?
Madam Chair, I would like to motion to approve the resignation to retirements as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Saka Wijan, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, all in favor. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Brown.
Yes, Madam Chair, with the new hires, our staff's been very busy. For instance, we've been busy with the process of interviewing and replacing staff. We have a list for the board's approval for tonight.
Okay, do I have a motion we approve new personnel? Thank you, Ms. Garrett, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, all in favor. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Brown.
Madam Chair, tonight we have one action item and two information items from the board's consideration. The first one is a document that came to the board through the Virginia Association of School Superintendents and the Virginia School Board Association in partnership, and it is a resolution dealing with the tasks of the superintendents in the Commonwealth of Virginia for this past year, and I ask Assistant Superintendent Mr. Pleasure to share.
Repubgition of 133 Virginia Public School Division Superintendent's Superintendent of the Year for 2021. Whereas in order to ensure the health and safety of all Virginians, schools across the Commonwealth closed on March 13th, 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and most have provided virtual instructions since then as in-person teaching and hearing of the law. And whereas individual school divisions retained the autonomy to decide whether or not new instruction would continue and the format in which the instruction would be presented. And whereas stable and consistent leadership by the local school division superintendent has been vital in serving children through this pandemic. And whereas school division superintendents are responsible for the health, safety, welfare, and education of each child by creating school cultures even within a pandemic that serve all children regardless of their circumstances. And whereas public school division superintendents utilize guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, Virginia Department of Health, Virginia Department of Education, local health departments, and local case data in fulfilling leadership responsibilities in their community like no other time in their careers. And whereas local school division superintendents work collaboratively with their school boards, educators, parents, and community stakeholders in providing technology, resources, curriculum content, emotional support, and bills to children during the pandemic. And whereas traditionally, VASS Superintendents of the Year have been selected via this first panel of education associations after reviewing an individual superintendent's ability to demonstrate leadership for learning, communication, professionalism, and community involvement. And whereas all 133 Virginia Public School Division Superintendents have extraordinarily exhibited these qualities while leading their school divisions and communities through the 2021 school year. And whereas the VASS Board of Directors agreed on January 7th, 2021, to suspend the traditional selection process of determining a single Superintendent of the Year and unanimously agreed to recognize and honor all Virginia Public School Division Superintendents as Superintendent of the Year for 202021. And whereas VASS is appreciative of the Virginia School Boards Association supporting this resolution and the honor provided to each Division Superintendent by having his or her respective school board present this resolution to the Superintendent to be recognized within the community for which he or she serves and believes. Now therefore be it resolved that the Russell County School Board has hereby recognized Dr. Gregory A. Brown as a Virginia Superintendent of the Year for 202021 as designated by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents.
Okay, do I have a motion that we approve the resolution?
I might be a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parson, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, all in favor.
No.
No.
I'm she.
Give your own call, folks.
He didn't have a chance to shake her hand.
Didn't?
That's up in the breach, yeah.
Any opposed?
No, without staying, because I don't know the 132. I have to vote for somebody I don't know, and I'm not.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Okay, Dr. Brown, would you care to give us the coronavirus update, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, a lot of things have happened since our last board meeting. Executive Order 72, Seventh Amendment has went by the wayside. All 100-plus pages of it, when you look at the amendments, it's been replaced with the Executive Order 79, which is four pages. So we're very optimistic moving forward as our data continues to improve. The information we received today showed 4.4% positivity rate, hospital stay down to 52 individuals. So that's very encouraging for our region, and we hope that that continues as we move forward. Things associated with the coronavirus and the pandemic and stimulus funds, the ESTR3 funds have been presented to Russell County Public Schools, $8.1 million for various projects that are associated with the pandemic and improving the conditions of different things associated with. It's been awarded. Part of that requires that we have an opportunity for public input. That's been placed on our website. If you'd like to click on that and say a few words, some recommendations, things to consider. In addition to that, we had to install the first version, if you will, of our reopening plan for next year, so that's available as of today as well. So again, I'd recommend all stakeholders take a look at those documents, realizing again, that's very early in the process when we talk about starting school in August. But again, it's the first step toward that path. So we're, again, we're excited. The path that we've been on and taken, again, since March 13th, you know, to today, it's just really incredible. Parents have been very supportive, and we appreciate that. The job the teachers and administrators have done is just phenomenal. We are in the process of gathering SOL tests, results from SOL testing, and we're encouraged. The instructional loss, we were anticipating it is there, but it's not nearly as large as we initially had thought it might be, so we're really encouraged by that. We have a very robust summer school in place so that we can start addressing the instructional loss of our students, and hopefully when we start the school year in August, we're well on our way to closing that gap. So we're, again, we're really excited, real appreciative of the teamwork that's going on here in Russell County, and it goes beyond just our employees, again, to the parents, to the students. You know, there were times when we had some issues with students needing to do what they needed to do and not, but, you know, we're appreciative of where we're at today, and I can tell you we're far ahead of many school divisions.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. We have the first reading of policies.
Yes, Madam Chair, as a member of the Virginia School Board Association, Russell County Public Schools periodically receives VSBA policy updates to be examined by our school board members for implementation. And Russell County Public Schools Policy Manual, policies under consideration can be seen under the policy tab on board docs, and those will be available to board members and our crew, you know, our next meeting, and staff requests any feedback and direction on those with our July meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. And if you wouldn't mind, sir, would you, on your computer, show how those policies can be accessed?
Sure.
For every...
Well, again, you go into the policy tab, and you have active draft and retired, and some of these things are not available to all, okay, retired and so forth. And again, the draft, I'm not for sure exactly if the draft's available, we'll check in on that. If not, we'll see if you want to make that available. With the draft, we have these policies. And these policies, again, these are the three policies under Section A, up for consideration, these are the three for Section B, Section C happens to have two, and so forth. So these will actually come up for vote next month? Yes. Yeah, so the board will have the month of June to go through all these policies and examine them, provide questions if you'd like answered from myself or from legal counsel, and then, again, it'll be before the board with the July meeting.
But just to be clear, since we talked about transgender, 13 of these have to do with that or have the code, the state code law?
Yes, there's 13 policies that are...
People that have been in on it.
Sure, sure. As far as the policies are concerned, the comments that we've heard tonight dealing with restroom facility use and so forth, and even pronouns, those things are not in these policies for approval. The only thing we're dealing with here is, again, pre-existing policies and really just code reference issues. So again, for example, Mr. Gibson, when you look at one of the policies that's available, let's see, AC, the non-discrimination policy, you see that there's been a change for the board's consideration. They dropped disability status as a veteran and replaced that with military status. And then, as far as the transgender policy is concerned, the only thing that we're looking at is here at the bottom, and that's just simply a reference that that policy is, falls under the non-discrimination policy. This policy is pre-existing already. Matter of fact, all 13 of the policies that you speak of are pre-existing policies.
Oh, that refers to the law?
Yes, yes. Code of Virginia 22.1 dash 23.3.
Yeah, so, yeah. This may be a good time to re-posit this question. If it's, if it's already a law and it's mandated, why do we even own it?
Well, I'm just, because what can we do against a law? That's fair. Let's go on.
This law actually directs you to do, to enact it. It goes, there's a list. You want me to read the entire statute or just the part that directs this going forward?
Well, I'll just, you can read it.
The title of it is Treatment of Transgender Students Policies, and the code reference is 22.1 dash 23.3. Without going through the whole code, which goes through what the policy should contain, at the very end of that statute, which was passed by the General Assembly this year, it says, "Each school board shall adopt policies that are consistent with, but maybe more comprehensive than model policies developed by the Department of Education pursuant to subsection A." And subsection A directive of the Department of Education would come up with the model policy. So it's a directive, it's not a law. It's a law telling the school board that you have to do something, and that was enacted this year.
So again, why do we even have to...
Well, the VSBA provides these policies, and again, the VSBA is not an agent of the Department of Education nor an agent of our legislature. We contract with the VSBA to do the work to construct that policy, as nearly every school division in the Commonwealth does. So the policy that you're speaking of, every school division practically...
Yeah, so it... There's maybe a good time to re-posit this question. If it's already a law and it's mandated, why do we even own it? Well, I'm just, because what can we do against a law?
That's fair.
This law actually directs you to do, to enact it. It goes, there's a list. You want me to read the entire statute or just the part that directs this going forward?
Well, just...
The title of it is Treatment of Transgender Students and Policies, and the code reference is 22.1-23.3. Without going through the whole code, which goes through what the policy should contain, at the very end of that statute, which was passed by the General Assembly this year, it says, "Each school board shall adopt policies that are consistent with but may be more comprehensive than model policies developed by the Department of Education pursuant to Subsection A." And Subsection A directive of the Department of Education would come up with the model policies. So it's a directive, it's not a law. It's a law telling the school board that you have to do something, and that was enacted this year.
So, again, why do we even have to...
Well, the VSBA provides these policies, and again, the VSBA is not an agent of the Department of Education nor an agent of our legislature. We contract with the VSBA to do the work to construct that policy, as nearly every school division in the Commonwealth does. So the policy that you're speaking of, every school division practically, is doing that. So the policy work that was done by the VSBA is actually for us, not for the General Assembly or for the Department of Education. We contract with the VSBA to be members for them to provide us with that service.
So what if, I vote no when we do this? But next month, there's 13 policies that have to deal with that. And... Like what Mr. Parsons says?
Well, again, all 13 policies are already in place. They're already active policies. The only thing that we're doing is simply saying that this would also apply for our students that fall under the transgender...
But I vote no. I mean, I don't know if the state has more authority over the other way I vote.
Well, the responsibility of the school board by 22.1-79 states, you have 10 responsibilities. And of those 10 responsibilities, four of those are specific to your job to be, follow, ensure that the laws of the land, basically, are being followed. So you, as a board member, are charged with being a policymaker for Russell County Public Schools, but the policymaking component is associated with legislative action and laws. So really, the issue here is if this is something that folks want to change, the focus really isn't here with the seven of you. The focus really is with the legislators, Wompler and Kane and so forth. Those individuals are the ones that make the laws, provide the laws, and give us the laws. You are charged by your oath and by the Code of Virginia to follow through and create policy that supports its laws.
Really, we don't create the policy, we just represent.
Well, the policy, and you contract them to do it. You don't have to. We can bring the policy here and have, you know, Ms. Patton create the policies for us as well. So, again, we are contracting that service, and VSBA is working for us in the construction of those policies.
But we can't say no to the policy.
Well, you can vote yes or no if you wish. That's your prerogative. But, again, the responsibility of a board is to create policy that supports the laws of the land, in this case, the state of Virginia.
Again, you all are policymakers, so long as the policies are not inconsistent with the law. I will say that this statute is a little unusual. There's not many statutes that actually direct you to adopt a policy. It's more something that you all do with your discretion, but this is an act of the state legislature directing each school board in the Commonwealth of Virginia to adopt a policy consistent with that statute of federal law. And so that's what you can direct to do. So you're policymakers, and so there is some discretion in some places, but it cannot be inconsistent with the law.
That's Dr. Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Webb has a question.
Can I have a question? It would probably be best to just, we have a section for delegations not on the agenda to speak.
Yes. If you don't care, just... Thank you.
Our Madam Chair, that takes us down to Section J with our sales tax maintenance reports and expenditure report.
Okay, Dr. Brown, our sales tax for April 30th was $443,031.31. $31.56.
An incredible increase, again, Madam Chair, over last year.
And 80,000 was 3,300, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion? We don't need a motion, okay. We have an opportunity for the maintenance report, expenditure report. Future agenda items.
Again, Madam Chair, we'll have a coronavirus update again next month, and we'll be moving the policies forward for discussion.
Okay, we have delegations not on the agenda?
Can I ask my question?
Sure.
Well, first, we have a person that didn't show us. We have another person that's taken his spot. But I do have a question. I didn't come there and I've been here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not very loud, I can't...
Okay. So my question is, I do understand it's a law. I think it's stupid law, but I do understand it's a law. Here's what I'm gonna tell you, that regardless of beliefs, because I'm not gonna throw that in the mix, if you choose to adopt this, I can promise that there's not gonna be a need for you or the board because... Here's, go to my delegate, because I learned today that they both voted in agreement with this law. So my question is, what's the next step? Are you going to decide how you're gonna proceed with this law? Because, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that you don't have on your policies that you have to put in place. So are we putting these things in place? Are you gonna talk about it in the next month? Because I want to be here, because it affects my child. I mean, I feel, I know you guys are doing a great job, and I feel like the most of you, I know that your heart's probably in the right place. I know that one shoulder you got the right place, the next shoulder you've got a law that you have to carry out. It's gonna be a hard thing, you know, because this decision is gonna come down to who got the courage, and I wouldn't give other person that I won't, and who can stand up. We're not known for a lot on this side of the state, but I do think it's time as a board, regardless of the law, that someone's gonna stand up. Whether it be you all, I mean, if not, we'll go to the next board. I think if one board, one, would stand up, you would see so many more follow behind you. I have no absolute desire for any child to feel mistreated or because they're confused. I mean, I want every kid to feel loved and cared and have the same rights and responsibilities. But when you look at one group and say, okay, you're transgender, I'm gonna give you a lot of this and that, then you put my child in on it. My child is not going to school if you open the back doors to whoever, and I can promise you that. And if you guys don't stand up, I'll go to the next one. Because somebody's gonna listen, and somebody's gonna stand up, and it all depends on who's got the courage to do it first.
Right.
And, and I know all of you are amazing people. I know most of you think the world of you. But if you don't have the courage, election year does come, and then we can find people that do have the courage to do it.
That's right.
So I just wanna know, what's the next step? When are you gonna be talking about adopting this law? Because I don't want it to be wishy-washy, and you say, well, it was on the agenda, but nobody really knew. I wanna know. So, okay, I'll answer this question. How do I get that? Is there any concerns, but it's not, it's not designed to be advanced forward? So how do I get that in, sir?
Any, any, next month? It is... It has to be before school. You're gonna be on the agenda next month. Yes.
Okay. So we just...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take any of your time. You can do it. I'm sorry.
I do appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Pastor James Nunley, U.S. chief of administration of Russell County Public Schools here in Lebanon. I have many students here in the public school system, and I have some talking points I was asked to fill in, but specifically around this very issue. This policy, I don't know if you're aware, if you've read through it, it mandates that all school employees and students must use transgender pronouns or face punishment for discrimination without any protection at all for deeply held religious groups. That's part of this. You adopt it, you vote for it, that's what you're doing. That mandate directly threatens the constitutional free speech rights and religious freedoms of our students and our educators, all in one law. This mandate includes forced use of recently invented gender-neutral pronouns. Why do we need to invent something if it's wrong? This policy makes it clear that failing to use gender-neutral pronouns can result in serious career-threatening charges of harassment and discrimination. Disclosing the child's transgender identity to parents can also result in a charge of harassment, so even well-meaning teachers could jeopardize their careers by refusing to hide key information about a child from parents. Furthermore, absolutely no documentation or substantiation of student circumstances are required for this enforcement, despite the fact that you are permanently changing student records and imposing serious penalties on staff. We've already seen in the state of Virginia two teachers lose their jobs as a result of these types of policies. Just last week, Loudoun County suspended a teacher after he gave testimony on the transgender issue policy at a local school board meeting such as this. The school district is now being sued by a religious freedom legal group and a right to show. A French teacher was fired from his job at West Point High School in Williamsburg, Virginia, for declining to refer to a female student with a male pronoun. We're costing jobs here for people such as you, I. The bottom line is this: We're asking you to stand strong to protect our students and our teachers' religious freedoms and free speech rights. Please don't put us on the path to becoming like Loudoun County. Russell County shouldn't be forced to adopt the same kinds of policies that are already trampling on people's rights in Loudoun County. Our policies should reflect the values of our own families and our own community. It is possible to find compassionate ways to protect every child, including kids struggling with gender confusion, without trampling on constitutional rights. And we have entrusted you to do that. Not a buck of the legal end that is, you were voted on to do that, and we ask you to do that. Thank you. We have here a petition that was signed by 396 educators, and it simply states, regarding the transgender bathroom bill, the racial equality teaching agenda, and the mask mandate, we absolutely don't want this garbage talk to our children.
My little ones are innocent, but this directly involves them. I just wanted to, and I apologize, I just run a psychological background. I have a master's degree. I have been a therapist in the school system. I've been a psychology associate in a supermax prison, okay? Some things tonight, I understand, I don't want anybody to use the bathroom whenever it comes with my liberals, because I think of the pedophiles and the sexual predators that I'm gonna treat in prison, that whenever they were this age is whenever those behaviors started. If we allow to introduce this, we are allowing other doors to open, and that's not something that I'm prepared to do. If that means asking a teacher to give up their bathroom for transgender students, I don't want to single out transgender students either. Do I fault them for who they are? No. Do I understand it? No. Do I think it's right? No. But do I think that they should have something different? Yes. But don't force it on my kids. Don't force it on boys, don't force it on girls. However, it should not be black or white. There is a gray area, and blatantly could. Working with sexual predators for so long and working in law enforcement, you see these things firsthand. And I do not want to allow those things, because bullying has increased, the rate of suicide has increased, whenever all of these other things have been allowed in, and it has pushed mental health way over the deep end, along with virtual learning. The mask mandate that the kids are having to do causes their anxiety to skyrocket. And this is coming from a parent of a child that has narcolepsy with cataplexy, who already has a hard time staying awake in school. Nonetheless, as she's trying to be taught on virtual and everything else, I apologize, but they're getting busted, and I want to get it all out, I can't. But these are things that are directly affecting our future leaders, our future students that are going to be up here one day taking their jobs, that are going to be into the school. I love Dr. Seuss, there's nothing wrong with it. I never saw a problem with it whenever I was a kid, and neither do my kids, okay? These little bitty things, I understand, changes need to be made, however, so many things have gone away overboard, and we're opening the door for a whole mess of problems that is going to come in. So I please encourage you, if you have to take action, if Katie's right, excuse me, Ms. Patton, if she is right that something has to be done, I encourage you at least to make changes that can benefit both sides of the fence.
And I do...
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Rachel Hicks.
Rachel Hicks.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Brady Hurley, and I'm gonna ask for some respect, because I have a very divergent view from many of you, and I patiently listen to all of yours, and the point of view that I have to say is this: Whether the Russell County School Board or anyone in this room agrees or not, children in Virginia can and do receive gender therapy and treatment in this state is legalized. Virginia courts issue IDs and birth certificates that change gender. That's a fact, that Russell County has no control over it. Well, Caster Public Schools attempted to require a transgender student to use a separate bathroom. As a result, the board was sued by that student for violating that child's equal protection rights under the Constitution. They lost. In fact, when it was appealed once more, it went to the Fourth Circuit, and the Fourth Circuit held that the child suffered a legally cognizable harm, because the school treated that child as an other, very publicly branding that child with a scarlet letter T. Judge Nguyen on the Fourth Circuit noted that the board was fully capable of providing a child privacy as to their genitals in the bathroom, whereas the board could not hide the outward physical appearance of the child. This county has spent plenty of money reaffirming the U.S. Constitution since 2018 reaffirmation of the 230-year-old Second Amendment and the attempted First Amendment re-interpretation this past winter. It is foolish now to mount an unwinnable war on the U.S. Constitution, but even more so shameful that this board has clapped to these discriminatory comments. As a social worker for the county in 2018, I had a traumatized foster child who merely dabbled in painting his nails and wearing makeup. The student body largely didn't care. Your children and your neighbors already accept these children into their communities. However, there were a minority of students that said things to this child, like, "I hope to see the day you hang," to him loudly on a school ass. That day, that student called me from the school board office, no, it was the trade school office, suicidal, because it was another day that he had to cope with who he is. Because of his choices, he didn't even transgender. He didn't transition. He merely painted his fingernails, and other students chanted, "We hope you hang." That's not speculative, unlike these arguments. That legitimately happened to a child in this school board, a foster child who already didn't have anybody to be his voice. I ask the members of this board to follow already established law and precedent that protects transgender students, because this county cannot afford another legal battle. But also, I ask this board to stop treating living and breathing children who already face an entire world of hurt out there as second-class citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. ...
I'll be very agree. I believe this sign says, "Protect every kid." Nobody in this room is expressing a desire to discriminate, bully, and nobody is, you know, accepting the bullying of anybody, nobody. But when you, when you say, you get up here and you say that you're protecting one group of kids, that's exactly what you're doing. You're discriminating against one group of kids.
One other, exactly.
So it's very disingenuous to get up here and make an argument that we're here to protect every kid, not to segregate or to move one child from here to another. The other comment that I would like to make tonight is, where do we draw the line in Russell County? What if the governor makes some kind of law that says you have, your child has to take this medicine, which we very well might see this upcoming year with this vaccine? Where do we stand, and when do we draw the line and say... Where do we stand and when do we draw the line and say, we're not doing that? I don't envy your all's position, I don't. It is an impossible position to be in. But somebody has to have the backbone to stand up and say, enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Stinson, and I'm a citizen of Russell County. And I apologize, I'm Dr. Brown, and I'm speaking to you. The reason I'm here tonight, and I beg the pardon of everyone here, because I believe there's another argument that's well entrenched, my comments are to the race program, which may or may not already be a moot argument. Is, I'm here to read a letter from a young man who is a family friend, he is out of the area, and did not come here and read it and represent himself tonight. So.
Lift the mic up just a little bit, will you? Can you take it a little better, sir?
Yes. So I'm here to read on his behalf, and this is a letter to the school board. And he, read, he says, members of the board, my name is Thomas Holbrook. I'm writing you today to explain why I believe the decision to reduce race program funding for private school students is both incredibly unwise and unfair. I graduated two years ago from a small Christian school in Castlewood called Learning Center. With aid of the race programs full funding, I've been able to pursue and acquire one associate's degree in administration of justice, as well as another associate's degree in general studies by the end of the summer. I maintain a 4.0 GPA with minimal cost to me. I plan to move on to VCU, for which I've already been accepted, acquire a bachelor's degree in medical laboratory sciences, and eventually become a forensic science doctor psychologist. VCU, as many of you know, is an expensive school, but I've worked very hard and managed to save enough money to cover most of my education there. However, had it not been for the full funding providing any vital race program, my hopes and dreams of achieving a debt-free education would be impossible. Therefore, with all due respect, that I beg of you not to reduce the funding. There are plenty of other students out there like me who think this just as much as those who attend Russell County's public schools. I believe wholeheartedly that we should be treated as though we were not less important or less valuable to our communities. Thank you for your time and attention, and I thank you for your time and diligence.
Thank you, Mr. Stinson. And at that point, I would like to thank, that's not only the Russell County School Board associated with the race program. We would like to thank our Russell County Board of Supervisors. Without their funding, we, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have happened. And they have been good partners with that program, and it helped a whole lot of our students.
Thank you for the chance to speak again. I've come from Hanover County. Okay, I know that it seems strange, someone coming all the way from Richmond area, but I have four kids. You know, I have two in high school, I have one in middle school and one in elementary. Two boys, two girls. And I have the same, they're all in public school, and we have the same concerns. I get to see what's happening in Richmond. I get to see the policies that are being passed. And it's very concerning for me as a parent. At the same time, our campaign to protect every kid is just that, to protect every kid. Policies need to be passed that elevate every student, that provide protection for every student regardless of whatever I fit into your classification. And the unfortunate thing about these policies, these model transgender policies, is they seek to set aside a certain subgroup and then place a serious risk to the bodily privacy of young girls in changing areas, or undermining the parental rights. You know, what, shouldn't a parent have the ability to know what's going on with their child in school and not have school administrators and teachers withhold information from them? I do agree with legal counsel in one respect, that this is a highly unusual bill that was passed. She is absolutely correct, because they are trying to push and force policies on this school board, on every local school division. And this is what we played out in the courts, and that's what the founding freedoms law sues is to do, is to weed this out, because there are over 9,000 comments, public comments on these guidelines, the majority of which were opposed. So all of this is going to be addressed in the courts. So as a duly-elected body, it seems appropriate to wait and to see what the courts have to say on this. Because if you enact these policies, then you're going to have to go through and create all kinds of training policies and things for the teachers, so they know how to handle certain situations. And once it's in, it's in. But here's your chance to stand up and say, I'm going to stand up for the Constitution, the U.S. Constitution, for Virginia Constitution, which trump all state laws. And that's going to be decided in the courts in the coming months. So I wanted just to encourage you, these, also to make one last point, these are model policies. This is not regulatory action. You had the law that created, that required the Department of Education to create model policies. So it's up to you to decide whether or not you're going to accept them as written, and as the Virginia School Board Association has presented to you, or are you going to change them, or are you going to stand up and say, I'm going to protect families, and parents, and students, and teachers, and protect every kid? So that's the question before you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Tamsa Habsrakany. I have two granddaughters, one's in Belfast, one's in the primary school. I have a nephew that's only in elementary, and I have a kid that's going into seventh grade. My two granddaughters are not going to be able to protect themselves if you let this pass. That should not pass to let them use the bathroom with the girls, or vice versa. I can guarantee you, if you let it pass, we're going to jerk all of our kids out of school and then go out and go into lecture dorm. I already jerked mine out once, he knows it. I won't, it won't break my heart to jerk them out of campus. I'll homeschool him, or you'll have to send a picture to my home, because I would love not to let him come to school, or my great kids go to school with this if it passed.
Thank you, Mr. Stinson.
Hi, I'm Michelle Vance. I'm not here as a parent, I'm here as grandparents. Basically, what we are asking for you to do is to stand with your community. We, I know everyone here, just about, we're all here to stand with you. You're not standing alone. We will be behind you.
Absolutely.
But we can't do it without you. It's time to let more than Virginia know our opinions matter.
Absolutely.
My name is Nathan Kaiser, and my daughter is at the High, living in high school, and my other daughter is at the Learning Center in Castlewood, which I would encourage everyone, if they do pass this, that you go enroll there, because they're an excellent school. But I would encourage each of you to take counsel with the family foundation and their legal arm on what you should do, because I think this is absolutely wrong. I think we're affirming a mental disorder in this, that's my personal opinion. Up until about 10 years ago, transgenderism was listed as a mental disorder, gender dysphoria. So we need to, that doesn't address the issue that you're up to right now, because Katie's right, it's a law. You've got, you've got to do something. So that's why I say, seek counsel with them, because they're the direction that we are encouraging them to go. And whatever they say we can do is the direction we need to go. Now, that said, there is an illness, there is a disease, there's a virus that's infected our schools, it's infected our elected offices, it's elected our, it affected our communities, and it's not coronavirus, it's progressivism. And that's exactly where this comes from. It's where the mask mandates come from, it's where the virus comes from, it's where critical race theory comes from. It is in every aspect of our lives now. And you know why? Because we sat back and we let it get in here. It is not their fault, guys. It's our fault.
Absolutely responsible.
So get up off your seat, get involved, and elect some people. Glenn Duncan, find somebody to run against, well, Moorefield, because he's the one that either didn't vote or voted to pass this stuff, this transgender job.
He voted in that one.
Yeah. Oh, there's 15 different bills, so he voted to present on some, and then other, anyway. Get involved. I'm the Republican County Chairman. Please, come talk to me. Let's get you involved. Find out what you can do. We have to get people representing us in Richmond, that way they will put these people in the spot of having to pass junk. And put laws into place that are just, that are insane, let's just put it that way. But thank you all. I hope you're ready about this. I hope that you seek counsel with people who represent our local views and our local values, because that's what matters. And I can assure you, if you do not do that, just like Ms. Witt said, if you do not do that, it's my personal agenda to attack every single one of you that don't go along with us, and our board supervisors, and any other office in Russell County. We're going to have the most conservative county in the state.
My name's Andrew Hensley, and I'd just like to go ahead and ask you, you go ahead and move this meeting next month to the government center. If we pass, if we pass it, if we pass it, if you don't have the backbone to stand up for what's right in Russell County, then you've got a month, you can resign. If you can't look at your neighbors in the face after you make a decision next month, then you've got a month to resign, you don't have to make a decision. And an abstention to the vote is a note, is a vote for it, in my mind, and the rest of the people in here. So let's go ahead and get this meeting moved next month, so everybody can sit down and we can be comfortable and we can all discuss what's going to happen. And if you can't make the tough decision, then you can resign, you've got a month to figure it out. Thank you.
My name's Justin Reynolds, I've got a daughter that goes to copper hill, Michigan. A lot of people here have mentioned a lot of stuff about kids with their mental issues. What's going to happen when you approve a hire that's already got these mental issues? If they come in here and they're going to eat back what they want to? You take a 30, 40, 50-year-old man and have to have a woman who goes to their bathroom, what's to expect out of that? Can you imagine that? What's the odds of something happening? And whose instincts are we on? We've already had discussions about the bathroom before, beginning of the year. There's literally two people to come into the bathroom at the time, and my little girl coming home with peeing her pants at least three times a week for the first two weeks of school, two, three weeks of school. Now is that acceptable? What's more dangerous, what's more sanitary? Three kids in the bathroom, or a little girl having urine inside her pants for how many hours a day? Can you explain which one would be more sanitary? Come on. Well, I'm going to do a question.
Please address your comments to the board, please, sir.
Well, I mean, what's the issue? I mean, what's the issue going to arise out of this, right? You got, I don't know how well y'all scream, but take the drag queen that's been it from a few years back, when they come in, reading to students. I can't remember what grade it was, if I remember. But the white women that sit through the cracks, again, in our schools, again, are harming several of our kids. I want that, you know, how many want to take for a little girl comes forward and says something? You see all faces of all time, more shaky. You see a bunch of Democrats and a bunch of liberals talking about, we shouldn't shame women for not coming forward right then when it happens. They wait years to come out of rubber, assuming that with the Donald Trump scenarios and senators and governors and stuff. You're going to put these little girls and little boys in positions to where they don't come forward for many years. And I ask that y'all just keep that in mind when y'all go to vote.
Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session with our attorney for, in lieu of advice on some stuff. And also for a Richard and break.
Sure. I need a second.
I'll second that. We'll need to go through the same thing on reading, if that.
Yes. What code do we want to go?
Consolation with.
With the terms.
What about moving the meeting next month? I'm thinking of answering on that.
Do you want to finish the delegation vote, you need to, before you do that?
No, I want to go to the Richard.
I'm under the rating, a proposal, new policies, changes in the curriculum, and the governor's executive order.
Excellent. I hope.
God, I have a second.
I go with 370.82 personnel. Well, cover it up.
All in favor? Did you say anything, Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes. And I would invite the audience to, you know, stay.
How long is the recess, do we know?
What about moving the meeting next month? Are they going to do that?
Yeah.
I don't know who goes there, case I don't believe.
Yes.
I'm out here too.
I don't think any of them.